Let's call this, uh, special meeting, budget meeting, November 29th. If it's an order, please call the rule.
Gate.
All bets are loose in this case.
Uh, Ison, here. Kaefer.
Here.
Laura.
Here.
Coos.
Here.
Zingy.
Here.
Bergeron.
Here.
Please rise for the Pudgek Liga.
Pudgek Liga.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with great reason, justice for all.
Thank you. So, under Communications, we have a, uh, Budget Update Number Seven, uh, laying out what actions have been taken to date. On the calendar, but I think that's probably not. There's nobody signed up on their person to be heard. Is anybody here that wishes to speak to the Capitol? Seeing none, that brings us into, uh, unfinished business. We'll get back into the General Government Budget that was deferred from, uh, the 26th. And we left off, uh, with the Peace Department, so we're now on L1, under Public Health. Everybody guys can't forget there. Alright, on L1, there's a summary. Any questions on that? L2, Mission Statements, Goals, Accomplishments.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes?
Um, on, uh, my, the Contact Purchase Services, I see an increase of 433%.
That would be for the consultant in regard to the hot food leave.
Thank you.
Correct, and I probably should address that when we get to that particular line item.
Okay.
Okay.
L3? L4? L5? And L6, that's, um, the graph there talks about, uh, funding sources, operating budget changes for 2019. L7, is this where you want to jump in, Carl?
It is, Mr. Mayor. When we put the draft budget together, we had no idea, uh, where we were going to be with ECG. You have an agenda item coming for the meeting of December 6th, and I just want to give you a heads up for Phase 1 Services, this number's going to have to be adjusted substantially upwards if the Council opts to move forward with that agreement. So you'll see that number tomorrow, and we can come back, uh, after the Council decides what it wants to do.
Who am I going to?
Come back.
Alright. Comments? Questions?
Not yet.
Alright. L8? And again, that's dealing with the capital projects, get candidates with center expansion, building to move. And any questions on Public Health? Move this into the library. Summary on page M1, talks about the different divisions at the library or programs that they run. List it out there, Department Executive Sumories. Funding sources. M2 is, again, part of the summary. M3 is the Adult Technical Services Division. Could you explain what the Alaska Joint Catalog is? Would please?
Uh, yes, the, uh, Alaska Joint Catalog is a, uh, catalog that many public and, uh, some academic libraries in Alaska, um, are sharing, um, their catalog services, and they also share, um, their collections. So, we are, um, considering, uh, moving or, uh, proposing to become a member of the Alaska Library Catalog. And right now, what we're doing is we're getting, uh, numbers for what that would cost, um, what it would, how it would impact, uh, staffing and, um, our services. And then, when we're, uh, when we have all those numbers, we will, um, propose that.
Okay, is this a online thing, or is it actual physical?
It's, we would share an online system, um, and then we would also, uh, have the ability to share our, our books and DVDs with other, um, libraries, and we would also be able to, uh, request, um, or our users would be able to request books and DVDs and other, um, items from other libraries across Alaska.
Thank you. M3? M4? Still under the Adult Technical Services. M5, that's a division summary. M6? Budget changes. Again, personnel services. Division Operating Budget Details. M7? More operating expenditures. Narratives. M8, more narratives. M9, reach up the narratives for the Adult Technical Services. M10, this is the Outreach Service Division. They have the Mission Statements, Goals, Accomplishments. M11 is the Division Sumories. M12, operating budget changes. I think this is the latest personnel again. Division Operating Budget Details. M13? There's the narratives for that section. M14, we move into the Children's Service Division. Gives its goal and objective. Consequences on M16, or M15, the Children's Library. Long list of them. M16? M17 gives you the summary, the division summaries. Personnel listing, funding sources, then the true category. M18 is the Operating Budget Changes. Division Operating Budget Details. M19 finishes up the, uh, summary of operating expenditures, shows the narratives. And 20 is narratives. Move on to M21, that's the First City Library Division. M22, again, operating budget changes, there's no changes in this one. Division Operating Budget Details. M23 are the narratives for the First City Library Division. M24, UAS Library Division. Any questions there in regards to their goals and consequences? M25 is the Division Sumories. Operating Budget Changes, again, the only thing listed is personnel, the cost of living adjustments. M26, division operating budget narratives. M27, Catch Can Public Library, O&M. Only thing of note for me there in the Operating Budget Change is we still don't have the pellet boiler up and operating, so there's a decrease in $7,000 or 70% in that heating fuel account. I think we're still working at trying to figure out how to, what we're going to do with that system.
Correct, we're evaluating it now relative to repair versus replacement.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I was, I was looking at the, uh, the cost for what we're spending on heating fuel for pellets, and I was, you know, I was going to ask some questions, and $3,000 is basically 10 tons of pellets, and so that's definitely not what it would take to heat with. And so, this, this system has been problematic since day one, hasn't it, Carl?
It has.
So, I, I, I think that this thing has run its course, and so, you know, rather than sinking more money into a fix on this thing, we should probably, right now, we have electric and pellets, is that it? We should put in a high-efficiency oil-fired boiler and be done with it. I think, uh, I think if this comes back to the Council, that's what I'm going to be suggesting. Because when we have low, um, uh, lake levels, I think it's incumbent upon the city to set the example to not use electric heat, use some kind of alternative fuel source. And so, I think that there's a lot of, uh, reasons that we should probably just put in some other kind of boiler other than electric. So, when that comes around, you'll know what I'm thinking.
Alright, appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else on the M27? M28 is the Division Operating, uh, Budget Details and Narratives?
I, I have a question overall. I'm, I'm just going through the different portions of the budget narrative on this thing, and there's like $2,500 of travel and training interspersed all through this. What is the cumulative amount for travel and training for the library?
Let's see, good question. Let's see, I have not added it up between divisions. Let's see here. So, and the reason we separate it by, um, Division, Adult, Children's Outreach, um, is because, uh, we report to the State Library, uh, which makes us eligible for State Library grants, and that's what they, that's the kind of information that they request. So, um, I would have to, I'll have to add this up, so.
Okay, well, it, it's not like I'm intending on vetoing any of it, but I was just wondering what the total amount would be.
We can get that for you. Put together.
Thank you, that's, that's all I wanted to know.
Oh, okay, sure.
Everything's great, thank you.
Yes? Hi. While the dollar figures aren't large, um, can you please explain the 260 and the 280% increases in building and grounds maintenance and technical services? Why the big percentage leap?
Yes, um, so, uh, this past fall, um, I believe there was a question from the, uh, Council about, uh, the, uh, condition of the landscaping around the library, and, um, so, we, um, are working with, oh my gosh, I forget the name of the company, but with a company who's going to come in and do periodic, um, uh, maintenance, just kind of upkeep of the, the landscaping around the library. So that's the, um, uh, the Buildings and Grounds Maintenance Services. The Technical Services is, at that same time, we were looking at, um, the kind of inspection services that we provide, or that we, um, have, and, um, we, um, felt the, um, uh, we did not have a regular kind of pest control, um, uh, inspection and treatment, and so, we decided that, that, in a building that is this heavily used, we really needed, um, that kind of regular inspection and preventative treatment, and so, that's the technical, so that's the increase in technical services.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? So, again, M28 with the detailed budget and narratives for the O&M. M29 with more narratives. M30 is grant programs. Mission Statement, Goals, Accomplishments. The detailed budget. M31, sent to you like by grant.
96. 96, I'm sorry. You can answer his question earlier, 9600.
Oh, 9600. Thank you, David.
M31, Museum.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
So, if we want to make changes in there, we just offer a motion.
Sure.
So, um, I'm, I'm seeing the end of days for the pellet boiler, so I think we should take the $3,000 for pellets out of the budget. I'm, that's my motion.
Okay. Second, anybody?
A second for discussion. I noticed, Carl, that there was a note in the budget saying that you, you anticipated to actually be operating by the end of FY19, or was that just a hope, or is that?
That's our hope. We've been in discussions with AEDA's pellet boiler people, and...
Of course.
They're indicating, once we have an assessment of what needs to be done, we should go talk to them, and there's a possibility that their connections with AEDA might be able to get funding for that portion of the costs that may not be replaced, uh, may not be covered by insurance. Once we have all that put together, we'll bring a report to the Council, uh, and then the Council can decide what it wants to do, unless that decision is made tonight.
I guess, is there any, I mean, the, the whole idea, options of the whole idea, a lot of the idea behind this process was to come up with a, you know, somewhere that a local product could go, and for the, as far as I know, the whole time, we've been buying what from BC and elsewhere, and...
As I understand it, and I think Mr. Hilson can address this better than I can, for a period of time, we were buying locally, but my understanding now is that there is no supplier in Southeast. Mark, do you want?
Yes, Mark Hilson, Public Works Director. That's correct, there's no, currently no local supplier, they come from BC.
So, I, I've had an opportunity to do quite a bit of work with pellet boilers, and, uh, in 2009, um, I was a Zicsumer tenant that installed the first commercial application of the pellet boiler in Juno at the Sea Alaska Plaza. In 2009, it looked like oil was on its way to $8, $9 a barrel, and then in 2010, fracking came along, and then the United States of America is now the number one producer of oil in the world. And so, it made what would have been, and should have been, a viable alternative to fuel oils, pellets, not practical, and they just don't pencil out. The operation, operational cost of these things is high, uh, to get them worked on is hard, um, there's not a lot of local knowledge on the things that go on with those boilers. And I think that, uh, I, I think we've, we've done our best to try to get a pellet industry in place, but I think that time has, has proven that, it's just not economical. And on top of that, Bear Valley isn't an inversion layer, and so, you're burning wood, the affluent from that thing stays in Bear Valley, and so, there's a, there's a lot of reasons that I think it's time to move on to something else. That's all I got.
I have a question for you, Sam, are you advocating that we ditch the pellet, pellet boiler?
Yes.
Yeah, and I won't support that. In the long run, it's a viable type thing, wherever we get the pellets from, because it does lower the need for electricity, because it's a, because the alternative is a, right now is electricity, and, uh, if we have anything come back at all, I think there will be, there may be local pellets, and, but, uh, it, we did that for a purpose, and I think the purpose is there, and I think we just need to wait until staff comes back with what is a viable alternative, and to me, it, it may not be repairing it, it may be replacing it, but we need to wait for that report and see where we go.
Yeah.
Question for Carl, the, the potential funding that you're talking about, would that only be for another boiler like Boiler, or would it also include possibly funding a conventional oil-fired system?
I'm going to defer to Mr. Hilson, he's been more involved in this than I have.
Yeah, so the, the, there's two funding parts, right? So we have a pellet boiler that malfunctioned, we have an insurance claim related to that. That boiler, I believe, is going to be determined to be completely non-functional, that's the direction that's heading. There is a possibility that there are some parts of that equipment that weren't a total loss, that the insurance company then wouldn't give you payment on. So, the potential that Carl mentions is another funding source, but that would be predicated on pellets, or some other, uh, you know, wood source, so, um, in this case, we're leaning towards pellets. I, I have a lot of doubts about the pellet boilers, I had them because of the experience at the library and, and the federal building. I did go over and tour the pellet boiler at the airport. If, if you have doubts about it, I would recommend you go over and look at that, just to see, uh, you know, talk to Mike Carney there, um, don't want to speak for him, but he was a very gracious host, host when I was there, and, uh, the key is getting a design engineer with the experience in these, uh, to do them successfully long-term. So, he has some very interesting perspectives on his pellet boiler that he's been operating for quite some time. So, I think the technology went from the boiler that we have in the library, uh, to a, a very much more refined, um, very much more low-maintenance boiler that you could get today. So, right now, as Carl mentioned, uh, we're having that pellet boiler evaluated, uh, to see, uh, to have a professional say, okay, this is, this is condemned, you cannot use it. So, we're waiting on that evaluation, it should be here in about two weeks, um, but that engineer specializes in wood energy, they're called Wise Wood out of Oregon. So, if, if any of the Council members have doubts, I would definitely recommend talking to Mr. Carney and going over and see his operation, because it looks totally different than the library's. It's a, a much better system.
Dave?
Yeah, we, we actually did benefit along the borough side by watching what you guys went through.
Thanks.
So, so, thank, thank you so much for that, that, that was very helpful. I guess, I, real, real quickly, I, um, I guess I'm willing to wait for the, for, for staff's recommendation, but just saying down the line, if, if we can't identify a somewhat local source for pellets, I'm less excited about doing this, so.
Nick? Yeah, I was just going to say, I, I know when we pushed this to the library, not only anyone called it the architect, or whoever in heck it was working with us, didn't want to do it, so I don't think they cared whether we got a good one or not. I mean, it was a fight, and I think Carl remembers, and Bob remembers, I know, just getting it in there, and so, I, to me, it was the way it was designed and everything else, but I'm not an expert, and I, I did go to Juno, I know the one that Sam's talking about, I'm assuming the one in the Sea Alaska Building is still operational and it works good, so, we just got a bad design, and we'll just see what the report comes out with and go from there.
Thanks. Very quickly, I, uh, in, in my last, um, I had, uh, quite an opportunity to, to read feasibility, I read a couple of extensive feasibility studies on pellet boilers. The, uh, cost per, uh, term, uh, oil versus pellets is, uh, oil is much, much less expensive. Uh, it's much less expensive to operate, the pellet boiler is not a, um, um, one that goes for like when the weather's kind of warm and kind of cold, it's for the, it's meant for the dead of winter, because they don't turn on and off and, you know, adjust the heat very well. So, um, there's, I, I, I was the proponent of, of pellets back when this all was coming out, and was very excited about it, saw the potential, but as I objectively watched plus read, uh, feasibility studies, my conclusion is really easy, is that these are no longer viable option because of where we are geographically. Every study says that you should have a ready source nearby, I mean, we, we are shipping these things from a long ways away, and so, that's where that's going to go when it comes up. That's all I got.
So, when, when we first got into this, of course, there was a number of, I think, places in the community that was trying to, uh, wrestle with the fact of putting in a pellet boiler, to build the industry here. There was a pellet manufacturer working here, but we only really have, I think, two major customers right now, so, to run theirs on an intermittent basis doesn't pencil, so they are chipping in. Not to say that they wouldn't look at that again if there was, uh, more customers, I think the Bureau was still looking at what can they do with the pool system in there, so, um, I'm, I'm kind of like Nick and, uh, Dave, I'm willing to wait for that report, but I think along with that, we should talk, you should start thinking about feasibility of whether, what, what's the best route for us to go, whether we put an oil-fired boiler in there so that when we get into the low reservoirs and diesel burn and stuff like that for the generators, that we have the opportunity to kick over to an alternative source, whether we...
So, Mr. Mayor, the feasibility study could be easily augmented because it was written by Jim, uh, Jim Refill out of Juno, and so he can take a lot of the legwork that he has already done in that thing, apply it to, uh, the building envelope at, at, at the library, and tell us what is the best alternative for us. He's a heat pump guy, so he's going to tell you to be putting in heat pumps.
It may be.
So, but, um, I, I think the pellet boilers, I, you know, would get a mechanical engineer to do even a cursory study would indicate on which direction it should go, and not just me, I don't mean to say that I'm the foremost expert on everything, but from what I've been able to learn, I, I would think that it's time to move on to a different heating system. Thank you.
Okay. So, there is a motion and a second. The motion was to move on to oil.
No, the motion was just to take the pellets out of the, out of the boiler, but this is kind of, I, I...
Out of the budget at this time.
But during the discussion, we're going to bring this all back anyway, so I'm just going to withdraw the motion.
Second? Alright. Thank you, Sam.
Thank you.
M31? Moving on to the museum. Page N1. We have the Department Executive Summary there. Continuation on N2. N3, the Operating Division. Thoughts, thoughts, mistakes, and goals. N4? N5, Division Summary. Spenders by Categories, Funding Sources, Personnel. N six, operating budget changes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Oh, sorry, I don't mean to be a pain in the neck.
You're not. Go right ahead.
I'm looking at funding sources for the museum.
Yes.
So how come we're not using any CPV funds for anything at the museum? Considering the proximity of the museum, the amount of visitors that go in, the amount of folks that use our facilities, bathrooms, learn care, maintenance, custodians.
Get them, Carl.
We have four specific projects, such as when we did the renovation at the Centennial Building, CPV funds were directed towards the restroom component of that project. It's been staff's position over the last several years that until such time as we get a better insight as to how the litigation is going to be resolved in Juneau, that we take a very conservative approach relative to using CPV funds away from the port. Given the current plans that we have relative to reconfiguration of the verse, we're going to need all those CPV funds going to the port.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hahn. That's all I have.
Thank you, Sam. Under the operating budget changes and stuff, there's a section down there that talks about technical service account six-three-five-point-one-two for strategic planning facilitator. Can you tell me what that's about?
Good evening. Anita Maxwell, museum director. We did strategic planning, Lacy was the director at the time, so a couple of years ago, and really feel that because of all of the changes that we've had, that strategic plan's ending in two thousand and nineteen. And at the time we made that original strategic plan, there was a lot of unknowns. At that point, we were still grappling with whether we were going to have a new roof for the museum, much less get to the renovation and a permanent exhibition. So where we're at now is more of a crossroads of what are we looking for moving forward? What are our priorities? We've had a lot of staff turnover in the last five, six years. We've stabilized that now and just trying to figure out moving forward, what are, what are their priorities and trying to listen to the community of what they're looking for from us as well as continuing to meet more and more visitors as they, as they come off the ships.
So how would this facilitator work with the department? Does this work public forums?
Yeah, exactly. So, you know, we'd look at different surveys, we'd look at interviews, we'd look at community forums, a lot of the same techniques that we used in developing the permanent exhibition so that we made sure we're reflecting what the community's looking at. We also though need someone that has an eye to museum standards. So, you know, looking at what does our collection look like? How do we identify gaps? How do we reach out to the community to address those gaps? So there's a lot of those pieces, of course, with the Totem Heritage Center. We'd want to include the Totem Heritage Center Advisory Committee and just looking at, you know, for me especially, it's who aren't we reaching? Who, what, when we look at the collection, the Filipino community is not reflected in our collection at all. And I, I think that's wrong. I think, you know, so looking at where are those other pieces and strategically identifying, how are we representing Ketchikan and what are we missing and figuring out how to, how did you better job there?
I'll place that line on the map.
Well, it was six-thirty-five-point-twelve. So it's under the.
What page are we on?
Contract for services.
N seven.
N seven.
Yeah, N seven.
Okay.
And it's also under the operating budget changes at the bottom.
So it's six-thirty-five, which one?
One-two.
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 Okay, so that's twenty thousand dollars.
So just to clarify there, the other piece that we use technical services for is all of our instructors for our Native Art Studies program.
So just listening to you talk, it sounds like you have a general direction of where you wanted to go. So you think you would need a third party to facilitate those ideas and put those together?
I feel like we do, just because we, we've had so much change in the last two years that being able to stop and reflect and make sure that we're, we're looking at a, at a broader perspective of what are our, our international visitors needing from us? Because that's, you know, we, we tend to be very English-centric, of course, and have found that in visitor management in the museum in particular, that, looking at how else we, we serve those visitors. There's all these other pieces and parts of things that have changed for us over the last couple of years. And I think having a strategic planner outside of staff facilitating it would be fabulous. Partly it, it's amount of time. If staff is doing a lot of that work, then we're not doing the work of the museum as well. And so being able to have a facilitator gives us a little bit more of a ten-thousand-foot view as well, which I think is important as we move forward.
Well, my personal perspective is, is that I, I, I think the museum is, is a wonderful facility and, and the latest displays, I think, are as good as I've seen.
Thank you.
And so if you were like not having great displays and it wasn't a very positive experience, I would be more leaning toward, yeah, get the facilitator, you know, do this work. But I'm not seeing where we're going to go from here to there. And so that's my comment.
Yeah.
I have a question for you. Have you bounced this idea off of the museum advisory board?
The museum advisory board is very supportive of that. The last time we did strategic planning, like I said, staff helped facilitate it and it would be nice to have an outside perspective to be able to facilitate that.
So is there any possibilities that Four Acres or Rasmussen would be involved in such a process?
Absolutely, because I think that's another piece of as we look at, you know, much like with the Chilkat Robe or, or some of the grants that we've brought to the council in the last couple of months, a lot of that is what are those other capacity building opportunities within the state and the Pacific Northwest? And so being able to look at those funders and seeing where they're, where museums are going in Alaska altogether, there's a lot of pieces where we work together. I think an example is the, the grant in aid, that was off of the governor's budget, but through a collective work of museums around the state, we were able to get those funds reinstated into the state budget and it makes a big difference for us. You know, seven thousand dollar grant at a time, but that makes a big difference.
Thank you. Anything else on N seven? N eight? So Anita, on that six-thirty-five-twelve, technical services, a lot of that is to pay for the Native Art Studies instructors. Do we get any grants from any of the native corporations in regards to support for that?
We do not, but however, KIC gives us a great amount of support for our students. So that money indirectly comes to us as, as a class fees. But KIC and the tribal council have been incredibly supportive of offering our students scholarships, both to fund the class, but also to pay for materials, which has then had the advantage of, of, we've had the last couple of years where we haven't had to cancel a class and, and, and that's been a fabulous show of support. So indirectly, I think Clincat Tida Central Council has offered some scholarships to our students as well. So it's got that, that indirect result of a full, a full class means that we're able to support a local instructor and run that program. And then those, that, those monies come in as class fees or materials fees.
Right. And I know that in Juneau, Sea Alaska does a lot of stuff, and I don't know if we can reach out, but they got the number of Sea Alaska.
We have, and we've, one thing the Heritage Center has done in the last couple of years is hosted some of their programs. They have a, a new program called Material Culture. For instance, they had, oh, now I can, I can see him like he's standing in front of me. John Hudson's son, Jack. Jack came over to do, to do a whistle workshop, a Simchion whistle workshop, easy for me to say. And that was supported by Sea Alaska, but then available to our students, so it was a free workshop. So it's a great opportunity where we can provide programming with Sea Alaska at basically no cost to us, other than having the facility open and having one of our staff host the, host the workshop.
Thank you. Anything else on the narratives? N ten, museum building O and M. Operating budget changes, narrative there. N twelve, bring this to historic commission. N thirteen, division operating budget details in regards to the grant programs. N fourteen, major and minor capital improvement projects. Yeah.
Question on the clean and repair the Totem poles. Is that a contract job or something done internally or what?
It's a contracted position. What we normally do is go to the artist who originally carved the pole. In the case of the, the two that are, are next on our list as priorities, the Chief Cayenne Pole, that replica was carved by Israel Shotridge. And then the Raven Stealing Sun Pole that's right next to the historical museum was carved by Dempsey Bob, who's a British Columbian carver. And so we would go back to them and see if they're available. If they're not, then we have a, a list of, of carvers that we've worked with, primarily Tommy Joseph, formerly of Ketchikan, now of Sitka, who did such a great job for us on the Chief Johnson Pole.
So is that, it says clean and repair Totem poles. Is that one pole, two poles? How many are you anticipating for twenty grand?
We initially hoped for just the Raven Stealing Sun Pole, but unfortunately, the Chief Cayenne Pole as of late has an alarming lean to it. And so we need to address that and, and having them come and look at it and see, is it a matter as simple as fixing the pole that it is attached to and writing that, or whether there's something more? But again, that would need to, to be assessed. And so I'm hoping that when someone comes and is able to do one pole, they can look and do an assessment of the other and give us an estimate of what we're really looking for. If it's above and beyond that twenty thousand, we would work that into, into next year's or into twenty twenty's budget.
Yeah?
So first of all, I said Tommy Joseph spent a lot, but I, I just have to say that besides me, an amazing native artist, he is a world-renowned restoration, with respect.
Yeah.
Thanks, bud. Anyway, so if, if the artists aren't necessarily the best folks to restore wood, work that's been deteriorated, it's people who specialize in it, like Tommy, who is what I would be leaning towards rather than the artist himself.
And that's why he was our first choice for Chief Johnson.
Right, and they, they tend to be more, Israel's famous and so he's, twenty thousand is nothing. So it would be far and away in excess of that. So I think that it's time to get my good friend Tommy back down here, do some work on our poles. And so, and interesting now that he, Tommy worked on those poles in the old fire station, which turned out to be a very good location to do that work. Thank you.
Anything else under N fourteen? Bring this on to the Civic Center. O one. Thank you, Nick. Department executive summary. O two, operations. Those goal accomplishments. Initiative statement. O three, again, operating division summary. Spending, funding, multi-equivalent. O four, operating budget changes. Look at the division operating budget details. O five, operating expenditures, contract for services, minor capital outlays. Moves into narratives. O six and O seven, continuation of narratives. O eight, finishing up the narratives for the operations.
Mayor?
Yes.
A question here. Looking on page O eight, there's three items that talks about machinery and equipment maintenance, rents and leases machinery and equipment, machinery and equipment, and it's six-thirty-five-O-seven, six-forty-five-O-two, and seven-ninety-twenty-five. And I'm trying to figure out, is there any relation to having them all split apart like that? Or is, it's just there's three different items there? And some of them almost feel like they're similar. I don't know.
I'll, I'll try to take first stab at it. And Michelle, you'll have to help me out. I don't know how many years ago it was we implemented the new code system relative to the budget. So if you take six-thirty-five-O-six, that's building and grounds, maintenance services. Six-thirty-five-O-seven, it's machinery and equipment, maintenance services. And the finance director wanted to start getting more precise allocations and this is how the new system came up. Machinery and equipment, seven-ninety-point-two-five, that's acquisition account for purchases of machinery and equipment. So six-thirty-five-O-six, six-thirty-five-O-seven are maintenance services. Seven-ninety-point-two-five is for the acquisition of equipment or machinery. Is that?
Yeah. The narrative is six-thirty-five-O-two, which is rental.
Rental of machinery and equipment.
If the Civic Center is leasing or renting any equipment.
They need a high lift or something like that, we would run it from someone like Tyler instead of buying it because we don't use it frequently.
It, it just seems like we've got several accounts there that maybe, maybe we've got the ability now to get a lot of detail, hopefully it's useful.
Thank you, Nick. O nine. So can you explain what's going on with the operable walls?
Good evening, Public Works Director Mark Hilson. I'll take the first crack at this. The operable walls are reaching the end of their service life. So the track itself is wearing out. So these are walls that fold ninety degrees and then are slid back out of the way to give you a big area. So the actual attachment to the track is wearing the track. So they have a limited lifespan. For a while, they were hitting the floors. We ground the floors down. We've adjusted them as much as we can adjust them. I think we've gotten every ounce out of them we can get. They got to be replaced.
So it's not just a matter of a hardware replacement because of the way they're captured doors and stuff?
Unfortunately not. And it's my understanding that this brand of door isn't manufactured. Unfortunately not. And it's my understanding that this brand of door isn't manufactured anymore.
Of course.
So we have to go to a different brand. So.
Dave.
So you say they have an operable life. Um, how long will we have with the new set?
Well, I would imagine the new set would, would last just as long as the old set. So, and they've been in since the building was built.
So twenty years?
Yeah, twenty plus. I think they're close to thirty, Alice.
Twenty-five in March.
Twenty-five in March.
Why don't we need them?
We've got to break up the rooms.
We have to break up the rooms.
Because there's times when we have more than one function going on. That's what the building's designed for.
That's a lot of damn money. Because it's ninety thousand roll-up doors, it's one-point-three-million-dollar fire trucks, three-hundred-thousand-dollar roll-up doors. I'm just venting here.
Thank you, Mark.
You're welcome.
Any more questions?
Let's just go for J. K. the fourteenth. Let them dose, and just not tell me about my budgets, and then further. You know, I'm on my mind, so I just get into commission. You don't have to speak anything other than what's already legal. Read those budgets. They're all ADA McDonald's insecure. I secured them over eighteen years ago.
Thank you.
You thank yourself in terminology a little bit faster, please. You're a bit slow.
Sure, isn't it? We've already went through that one process, uh.
Yeah, we did that one last time.
Brings us on to Q one.
They're watching.
This is the public works engineering, uh, summary.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I believe you skipped tourism and economics.
Did we do that?
That's right, I'm sorry. My apologies.
Thought we could bring it up again.
No.
Have Patty Hording down here, mind, mind me, I was never.
That was an especially enjoyable section, Your Honor, so I wouldn't mind that.
So we're on the summary page for, uh, public works engineering. Q two is a continuation of that. Q three. So, Mark, I guess this is the goodest place any to talk about the project manager, and any addition to that position, and kind of what, how that, how that's all gonna work into the engineering process.
Sure. Um, so, we've realized that with the capital improvement projects that we, we have, in order to, um, effectively manage those, keep up with those, match up well with the contractor, um, the architect, design professional, um, we really need someone at a level of a project manager. Uh, we do not have that job description currently. We don't have somebody in that position. Um, we have an engineer, we have engineering technicians that kind of touch on it, but they don't really capture the real essence of that position.
So is that kind of what Matt Brown was as a project manager?
He really progressed to that, yeah. So, but he, he, he never really, he never had that title. Um, so he was a senior engineering technician, but his role really was more of a project manager than it was in any sort of senior engineering technician.
So would this individually just restricted the public works, or would they be able to do utility projects, say utilities for building a building someplace?
Um. You know, that allocation of resources really, um, from my perspective, uh, it's, it's really just a workload issue. Um. It would be, you know, up to council and the manager's office as to what the most effective way to use that person is. Right now, uh, we're exceedingly busy with capital improvement projects. There doesn't seem to be any that are coming up that are easy. Uh, there's a saying that every, every project is, is complicated, full of challenges, no matter what size. Um, so I would certainly be open to that if there was a building in another division that that was appropriate workload-wise, and that direction came down through council, through, through the manager, um, you know, we would, we would make it happen. It's just the way we do things.
Yeah. Yeah, well, I just wondered if it's gonna have a person with a certain amount of expertise and if, and again, time allowable. I mean, I, I understand that we can, we can do some of that stuff, uh, interplay with other departments.
Right.
So, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
So I'm looking at your flow chart. So you have the, the project inspector under the senior project engineer, but not under the project manager.
So the project inspector, um, in that regard, they do a lot of inspection on, on what I would call civil work. So your utilities, roads, storm pipe, that sort of thing. So when we do a sewer replacement project, they're out there full-time. They do much more of the horizontal construction than the vertical.
Right.
So, but to that point, I would envision having, uh, someone in a technical role, a technician role, lower-level role, under the project manager.
So do you think that the project manager's role would be to, um, understand the specs, be able to interpret the specs in the contract, and, uh, be a person who, uh, says when something is a change order, additive or deductive, and hold people's feet to the fire? How, how is this all gonna work?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that is a part. So, um, you know, determining, uh, pay applications and, you know, charges and that sort of thing. Uh, coordinating the shop drawing reviews, uh, you know, all those submittals, uh, being on-site and familiar with all the issues that are going on, um, identifying, you know, hopefully items and plans that are not gonna work or are not accurate, uh, before they go out to bid, getting those managed, um, dealing with the contractor and the issues that come up on a daily basis when, when doing vertical construction renovations and that sort of thing. Um, and then interfacing with other departments and divisions to be able to have a point of contact when items come up. Um, so that, that's kind of the.
So all your problems in engineering will be over with this project.
Uh, there's no silver bullet, but, you know.
That's not the answer I was looking for.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks a lot.
You're welcome.
Anybody else?
Thanks.
Q four. Accomplishments. Long list of them. Division summaries. Q five, continuation of the summaries. Q six. Budget, uh, changes. And then there's the division operating budget details. For operations. Continuation on Q seven, and then into narratives. Q eight and Q nine are continuation of the narratives. Q ten, bring this over into building inspection. Vision plate, goals, accomplishments. Q eleven. Division summary. Q twelve. Operating budget changes. Division operating budget details. For the inspection. Q thirteen, continuation of the summary, and then on into narratives. Q fourteen, more narratives. Q fifteen, KPU administration building O and M. Q sixteen. Division operating budget narratives. And we go to Q seventeen, which is capital budget.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
So on seven oh five buildings, why do we have a fifty-thousand-dollar decrease? What went on there?
I'm sorry, Councilmember Bertrand, can you tell me again where you're looking?
Q seventeen, major capital outlay, uh, item number seven zero five dot zero zero buildings. Since it's a fifty-thousand-dollar decrease?
Yeah, that was, um, last year, we put an air conditioning compressor in the building. We already had the ductwork and fan coil unit. So that was that project. So it was a one-time project.
Okay. So, uh, Mark, well, you're there. Um, under the lands, that's where we take, um, dangerous building invatements, foreclosure properties and stuff like that. And we only spent about five thousand out of it, looks like for the two eighteen budget. How many properties do we have?
A lot. So, if you're talking how many are in private ownership that were working to get, uh, renovated, I would have to get you a report on that. If you're talking how many, you know, vacant or, you know, unimproved or, you know, properties that we own, I, I'd also have to get you a report on that. But which, which direction are you kind of going?
Well, you know, I, I know that we have a number of properties that, uh, we're working legally to get ownership of so that we can do something in a way of disposing of them. And there may be some invatement before we could do any of that kind of stuff. And I just want people to realize that there's a number of properties that will become, uh, that, that we end up with, that we gotta deal with in some manner at some point. There must be, I don't know how many properties out there potentially that we're gonna have to deal with.
Agreed, and, you know, I would, I, I would love to get out of the business of having properties.
Yes. Dave.
Yeah, you made, we had a report, was that two years ago, or three years ago?
Tried to update it quarterly.
Okay.
Kind of slipped the last six months.
Hey, the greenhouse is looking okay?
Yeah, well, it got, it got painted, and they took the, uh, uh, cantilever section off of there and fixed the leak. It's progress, but, uh, we have, we're hoping to have a meeting, uh, with him very soon. Uh, there was a lot of progress made, and then it seems to stalled, and we'd like to get that rekindled and some more progress made early spring would be our hope.
It's gonna be an ongoing problem.
Oh, yes, yeah.
It's just not gonna go away.
But I, I just do dispose of some of the ones that we have that were capable of disposing of.
Agreed.
Yeah, I don't know what's best practice in the process of doing that, but I'm sure you'll come up with it.
I would look for something first quarter of nineteen.
Thank you, Mark.
Control, control rooms.
Mayor? Yes.
Uh, question, you know, I know it's capital, we'll get into it later, but what is the, uh, aerial phototopographic mapping, and also the second one under ESRI conversion? What does that involve?
So that's the aerial photograph, uh, that forms the basis of our, um, geographic informational system.
Do the whole city?
So, yes, and in partnership with the borough, we would do the whole borough. So the, the issue with, um, I shouldn't say the whole borough, they will set the limits outside the city, but those limits will include some major infrastructure that we have that are currently not mapped, like Upper Silvis and some other areas. We don't have, we don't have that. So, um, about every ten years, you should expect that photo would need to be updated. Right now, uh, the photo that we have is partially updated from the FEMA photo, so that kind of got stitched together, so that's kind of a fuzzy area there. And then things progress, so things change over, over ten years. So that's the, Esri is a brand name.
I know.
Okay.
I know what it is. And are we converting from?
Absolutely.
Good.
Done. I think that was emotional.
Sound like you have history with that, Nick.
Maybe it's all, yeah, a long time ago. But, all right, I'll tell you the story about it sometime.
Perfect.
Thank you, Mark.
Thanks.
Q eighteen. Moving out of engineering. Into the cemetery. Summary's on the page R one. R two has a mission, goals, accomplishments. So, um, under the goals there, I see where they're talking about trying to put water up by the pavilion. Wouldn't it be just easier to get a towable tank system? Yeah, I mean, that, you'd have, I, I don't know where you would dig to get that up there, but it's either gonna be in asphalt or in a cemetery.
We could, we could certainly look at, uh, at a towable tank. We had a pretty simple route going up there that we thought would, uh, you know, allow water to go up there on a seasonal basis, so pretty simple installation. Um, towing it up there is, you know, of course, one more, one more thing in operation, but.
Yeah, I just, I, I was concerned about how you're gonna get it up there, what it was gonna look like, and, uh, that's another piece of infrastructure out there to try to maintain somehow. But if, I mean, if it's a simple process, I don't have a problem with that, but I, I didn't know what, to what extent you were gonna try to get that up there.
Yeah, there's no elevated storage tanks involved.
Yeah. Didn't we purchase some, I don't know who to direct this question to, didn't we purchase some software to keep track of the cemetery? And I don't see it on here, I'm just wondering, did we get it installed, if we?
We are still, yes, we, that came through the clerk's department.
Oh, okay.
The, the funding is in our.
Is that something I can look online and look up?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
That would be the, yes.
That is so cool.
But it's not out there yet. We are still working with the bugs, but we're working on it. We're working, making sure that things married up. But the final piece of that would be somebody going out there and actually photographing them. I mean, you'll be able to pinpoint each grave, but, um, someone actually would need to physically go out there and take photos of the headstones, which would be an extra layer, which is possible, it's just gonna take some time for someone to go out there. You can upload them right from.
So that's in the clerk's budget, though?
The cemetery's.
They manage the sale of plots and.
Right, and we, but we purchased the software last in two thousand and eighteen.
That's a good one. All right, R three.
Actually, actually, Your Honor, I did.
Yes.
So I just wanted to note, under the accomplishments for two thousand and eighteen, we had a discussion at, it was the last meeting or meeting before that, fairly recently, about, about issues we're having with how to make the cemetery pay for itself. Now, obviously, that's still an issue. But if you notice there, it says to date, there have been eleven full-time, full casket, and twenty cremains interns. And I had this discussion with the clerks numerous times. They said that's, those are the numbers, and it's just hard for me to believe. Ev- ev- every year at the, I do an end-of-the-year roundup story for sitmes, where I list the people who have died in Ketchikan, or have connections. And it's usually around two to three hundred. So I'm curious, where is everybody going? You know, I, yes, some people die here and they're buried elsewhere, but the vast, but, but I, I swear that every other, ev- ev- every other, um, obituary I see in the paper, and there's usually three or four a week, says burial will be at Bayview Cemetery. So I, I'm, I'm just puzzled, the amount of people who are dying, and they're not being reflected. And so, and so I guess what, what I'm curious about, is there a way to try to figure out what we're missing here, or, or what's, what's going on? Because it just seems like a lot of people are dying and they're not ending up in the cemetery, according to official records. So that's what. to the official records, so that's what...
Well, I would say that, um, recently, from people that I've spoken with that, there's a lot, lot more crem- cremation happening rather than a full burial.
Still twenty.
But people keep them, or they spread their ashes somewhere else, they are not bringing them up to the cemetery, I had two people come up the other day, they just wanted to put a marker on somebody, on a family member, but they were taking the ashes and spreading them somewhere else, and they weren't, and turning them into the cemetery.
I, I understand that more people are doing that, but, but truthfully, look, you read, I, I'm at the age now where I read obituaries.
We all are.
Yeah, and, uh, and just about every other one says burial will be at, at the cemetery, so, are they choosing not to then, I mean, it seems, it seems...
Never gonna answer that.
And you know what, I, I've been to more than twenty, or, or more, more than eleven burials in this last year, and big, I'm, I'm guessing about fifteen or sixteen, so...
R three. Operating budget changes and division operating budget details. R four. Yeah, Bear?
Yes.
Item six five zero point oh one telecommunications are twenty-three hundred bucks. Kinda curious just to, who else got telephones up there, or what that is.
So, we got Wi-Fi in all the graves?
I'm not touching it, I'll just tell you right now, I'm not touching it. iPads, no, uh, the, Steve, as, as the caretaker there, you know, he get, he would get missed calls because the landline would ring, but most of his duties, if not all, are outside, so he, he came to the modern age and acquiesced to a cellphone. So, that's the major change, he's now available out while he's out doing his maintenance stuff.
Twenty-three hundred bucks, for?
It was a monthly plan, that's the bulk of it, I'd have to dip, drill in further, but that's the bulk of it, it's a new service.
So, that's probably the cost of the phone and a hundred and ten bucks a month?
Right.
Yeah.
Sixty bucks ought to do it.
It's, it's scary how much things cost these days.
Thousand bucks local call. R four, there it is. R five. Major capital outlays, capital improvement projects.
Modest.
Do you know how many metrics we have left up there?
I could get you that number, but we really, um, all the ones that face the water haven't used. We only have a few on the backside, um, we have, and, we had one woman that didn't even, wouldn't purchase one until some more opened up that faced the water, she's gonna hang on to her if, when, until we build some more.
Or somebody moves out. Water view is so important.
So, we're, we're looking at...
I, I promise you, it doesn't matter. Cause I'm waiting for some more water view.
Moving on. Public Works Streets, S one. Department Executive Summary. F two. For me, the notable thing is there's, there's twelve FTEs there, and we ask those guys to do a lot throughout the year, so... And respond to every department in some form or fashion. Under the accomplishments down there, Carl, I noticed that we, uh, pressure wash all the decorative street lights downtown, are those, are those KPU infrastructure?
The streetlights.
Okay. The decorative streetlights, the stuff down there?
I'm assuming they are, technically, I really don't know.
Neither do I, I was wondering.
I will see what I can find out.
Someday, they're gonna be needing to be replaced, I wanna make sure who owns them. S three. S four, operating budget changes related to personnel benefits, division operating detail budget. S five, continuation. Of the summary, kind of the detail, and then the narratives. S six and S seven are narratives. S eight. Move into our, uh, seasonal litter program. S nine is, uh... Budget changes, detail budget, and the start of narratives. S ten is continuation of narratives. S eleven is the capital budget for the street division. Go down through that, see if there's anything in there that's a question, we'll take another shot at it, and, uh, capital budget, though. Anything, uh, on the streets?
Your Honor.
Yes.
Could you give me a bit of a description of a two hundred and twenty thousand dollar snowplow truck?
Sure, Mark.
What kind of equipment that is?
And, and I didn't quite hear that, the what?
The snowplow that we're replacing.
Oh, yeah, so that's a big snowplow, um, it's a ten-yard truck.
Oh, okay.
Let me see, what number is that?
Is that like the size of a...
Is that the five-yard, uh, is that the Kodiak, they call it, the, the white Chevrolet?
It's, it's a white Chevrolet.
Yeah.
Yeah, from nineteen ninety-five.
Their four-wheel drive.
We're gonna get it through this winter, we hope, but it's got some severe rust, frame rust issues.
Yeah, about, ten-yard truck, standard plow.
Correct, full-size, the real deal, yeah. Okay, you're welcome.
Does that compare in size to the ones that the state uses on Congress, or of that size?
Yeah.
Okay, that's a good truck.
Anything else for, uh, capital projects or the street division? Move into the garage. Everybody doing okay so far? All right, Q one. Department Executive Summary?
You, Bear?
Yes.
A question on how, I guess, the garage works, help me out, um, I know there's several different divisions that put money into it, and you can see it there, probably only about maybe eighty thousand dollars, but there's also money in each of there to buzz it, budgets that has maintenance and fuel, oil, and oil and so forth. And I know in talking, and, and from the, the accounting system, we've got supposedly each vehicle has a number, and we're accounting for the maintenance, I'm assuming the fuel, oil, and et cetera by vehicle. When it's all done. Somebody's grinning at me here.
Yeah.
She's getting a flat of knowledge going on here. Otherwise, we don't know what that vehicle's been doing, and I, I guess I'm trying to figure out, is our system working to where we can track what the cost of a vehicle is? And is it being done, cause if it goes to the garage, they should be charging their time against that vehicle, and I know there's a bunch of stuff going like this, and I don't know what it is.
So, the, the things that are transferred to each division, each vehicle is tracked for maintenance, so oil changes, um, and other major maintenance breaks, um, mark, I mean, things like that, other, if, tires, things that we can specifically identify with the vehicle are charged back to those divisions. The fuel is charged to each department directly when they purchase the fuel, to my knowledge, right, yes, cause everybody has their own fuel card and it goes to each division.
It doesn't relate back to that vehicle, it just relates to the department?
It doesn't, it, some of them do track by vehicle, but not all of them, it really depends on the division, whether they have it by driver or by vehicle, the fuel card may be in the vehicle, and then they go to the pump, and then they run their car, or it may be, this person may be in this vehicle today, and may be in that vehicle tomorrow, so they may have their fuel card for that person, so it just depends on the vehi- the, the people in the department and who's using it. So, the fuel isn't tracked, it, it's charged to the department when they use it with the fuel card, so when there's an oil change, however, I don't believe that is necessarily charged to the division when they, if they buy, do you buy them in the gallon?
In bulk, yeah, they buy it in bulk.
Yeah, so when they do that oil change, really what's charged is the fuel filter, I mean, the filters and the materials to make that, to do the oil change, not necessarily oil, because they buy it in bulk and they can't necessarily, um, split that up, and then the time it would take to try to figure out who would go, how much of that oil would go to each department is probably not a good use of time, but, um, that's the gist of it, I think.
No.
Yeah, we, we don't really know what it's costing to run a vehicle.
We do a markup, um, of twenty-five percent to incorporate any costs su- such as the oil when we, so the materials come through and the labor comes through, and we charge those back, and we charge a twenty-five percent markup to try to incorporate the supervisor as well as the miscellaneous items that aren't specifically tracked.
Yeah, and I can understand, the, an hourly rate should have a markup on it, be over and above the labor of that mechanic, that, that makes a lot of sense in the world.
Okay. Michelle, the, the actual labor, um, and major parts are billed back to an individual vehicle, is that correct?
Yes, those are tracked by vehicle, so that way, any department can see how much maintenance is, is, is going on with that vehicle, if they've had to bring it in three times this year versus once in the last five years, they can see that, so each department can track that, they can, if they don't know how to get it, they can call us and we'll get it for them, um, but yes, we keep track of that for the life of the vehicle while we have it.
All right, perfect, thank you. Q one. Q two. Mission statement, goals, and accomplishments. Q three. Division summary. Q four. We're into, uh, budget changes. Then we get into the division operating budget details. Q five. So, Carl, this is the one that, um, I, I look at here in travel and training and training and education, I know travel and training is where they go out to schools and training and education, if they can do something in town, but I'm just wanting to make sure that we're meeting our needs, I know that we, we get this newer equipment, I look at that new sweeper we have, which is a fairly complicated piece of equipment, and we're gonna require our mechanics to be working on that, and I just, I, I guess I'd like to, uh, make sure that we have a good plan to keep our, our staff trained to, to work on the stuff we have, and we're gonna be looking at some new types of fire vehicles, that kind of stuff.
Mayor Severson, I didn't anticipate us getting this far tonight, I do have budget updates in response to some inquiries you made about travel and training and tools and, um, our, our fleet, and they will be going out tomorrow for a session on Monday.
All right, all right, well, we still got some time to go here, we're gonna, and we can bring those back in the budget update, Q one. And then, um, the other thing is, I know that we have some software licenses, all these, all this equipment comes with some kind of software, and we have some management software, too, and, uh, so I looked down under the, uh, purchasing of, uh, computer and printers, and just wanna make sure that we have enough tough books for our mechanics to do the job they have to do, because you have one at the shop, you gotta take one out into the field and, and all that kind of stuff, and, uh, most of this, the larger equipment we have now has plug-in stuff on it, so I just wanna make sure that we're meeting those needs, too, uh, we're gonna ask these guys to do a lot, I just wanna make sure they have the tools to do their job.
Our new garage supervisor's been sitting in on, uh, the weekly public works meeting that I have, and indications that I'm getting from him is they're getting very well organized, and, um, they seem to be on top of it, so...
Q six. And Q seven are narratives. Q eight. Under capital. Anything in Q eight for anybody? So, Carl, are your wishes to, uh, uh, wait and have the rest of the public works managers here, or?
I, I'll defer to, uh, whatever the council wants to do, I know that Councilmember Bergeron had questions on recycling.
I, I had a chance to talk to, to many from, from the landfill today, and, um, he reared, but Bob was telling me that, uh, there's no market for it, and so, I'll do with that.
We're here at your pleasure, so...
As much as we can get it done, let, let's get it done, if anybody's here. All right, we're going into, uh, building maintenance. We have the summaries on U one. U two. So, one of the things that are all these kind of building things, there's these HVAC systems, how many different types of HVAC systems do we have? They always seem to be problematic and cost us money.
Yeah, they're, they're a challenge, um, the state of that industry is to try to grow efficiency in all the systems and make them more computer-operated and more remotely controlled. That all translates to, uh, sometimes, to systems that are difficult locally to operate. So, we have a variety of systems here, from pneumatically controlled systems to, um, just old-fashioned thermostats, to building automation systems that are, um, you know, put together by Siemens or some other companies, um, it's, it's difficult because the remote monitoring of that requires a contract and a monthly fee and that sort of thing, or, um, someone on staff that can monitor a building information system, automation system... Or, um, someone on staff that can monitor a building information system, automation system. And go and do these checks with experience in a SCADA background. So it's really become, it's gone from, you know, just call a plumber from a trade school to call somebody who's a computer programmer. Um, that makes it difficult. Um, what we're trying to do, since you touched on future projects, we're trying to, um, emphasize the performance aspects of it. In terms of our ability to operate and maintain it locally. The mechanical engineering profession is extremely, in my opinion, they're extremely fixated on efficiency of the equipment. To the detriment of the operations of the maintenance people. So it makes your maintenance people, um, either have to become highly trained. Um, or you try to, try to simplify the, the system. And it, it's a di- it's a difficult balance, it really is. We have everything from oil boilers to electric boilers, which are pretty bulletproof, but still electronically controlled. Um, to, I mentioned pneumatic controls that are obsolete. Yeah, they're awful, so temperamental. Um, so we have a large variety of systems.
So, go ahead, Tom.
I didn't mean to interrupt you, Bob.
So, in the future, I mean, at one point, we looked at this building and tried to figure out would be easier to put individual heat pumps in. To make it, uh, more efficient and more usable, and I don't know what we're gonna look at in retrofitting buildings or something.
This building, I think the key is to, um, really carefully look at the fresh air intake. Cause that was choked down in the last renovation. And this building was, you know, years and years ago was three stories, it is four stories. The heat was cobbled together, the HVAC was to some extent cobbled together. I think the key is one global look at the whole thing, um, and put it together with one consistent system. So that's what we would like to do and there's a, there's a, you know, project, not next year, but on the horizon and.
Which is gonna be very expensive.
Yeah, I know, HVAC, it's a dollar sign next to it.
It's, it's the control system.
It's the controls, the controls are very complicated and they're proprietary and, yeah, it's frustrating.
The, the industry's moving away from pneumatic, is that correct?
They're, they're gone, they're a thing in the past.
If you, if you have a pneumatic system, obviously it's made by the dinosaur, I mean, it's, that, that's really old school. The airport used to have pneumatic and I think that's the last public building I know of.
I can, I can show you one more.
Yeah, we, we got it.
This has pneumatics?
Not this building. The Public Works Administration Building has.
Oh, well, you guys don't count.
We don't, thanks.
Just a plank on the pipes.
Plank, yeah.
You got a window, open it.
Well, that's another story, huh? Windows.
Well, this, this gets back quickly.
But, 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 but the point is, those old pneumatic systems lasted for decades. What we have now seems to, I mean, how many times have we done this before?
Too many.
Yeah, whatever, whatever it is in the new system, it's not working long-term. So that's, that, that's what we're trying to, trying to wrestle with here, you know, what? Yes, we can spend a lot of money to replace the current system, but, but then it'll be here replacing that system in four years after that. I mean, it's frustrating.
It's the trade-off, just like automotive technology, like Mark is saying. When it gets more efficient, it gets more complicated. The more components you add, the greater likelihood you have that one of them's gonna fail along the way, so durability goes down.
Right.
And the ability to work on them becomes much harder.
Becomes all the pterosteroid.
So let's bring back pneumatics.
So to what level do we have to train our technicians in order to troubleshoot this stuff to even get?
Well, if you, you know, ultimately, if you want to avoid the monthly fees of having someone, you know, somewhere else monitoring it. You're gonna need somebody with what's called a SCADA background. So just like, you know, the electric division uses SCADA to monitor the, the grid. That's what's used to monitor building automation systems. And so that's, you know, uh, I know where, uh, for instance, you know, like the State Museum has, uh, an employee who has a background in that. And, and goes and checks in on all the buildings and checks in on all the alarm codes that are thrown. And then goes out with an iPad, okay, that sensor's, you know, throwing a code and checks it out. And maybe swaps it out, maybe, you know, disarms it or finds some other problem. And that's, I think, long-term, that's the direction of the industry.
Alright, yeah, I just, I'm always concerned when I see HVACs because they've been problematic.
Right, our, our approach to this, to this building, and there's a future, you know, museum HVAC project. You know, we wanna take our time and try to emphasize with the engineer that we want a very, not only a very thorough design. But as bulletproof a design as you can get us that's cost feasible. We want one that works reliably for everybody and has the controls that are needed. Because we have, in our buildings, we routinely have offices that are, you know, either way too hot or way too cold. Or, or controls that are thickle, uh, that go from hot to cold and, and it's, it's numerous offices, so.
Okay, well.
Thank you, Mark. You're welcome.
I'm just a wealth of great information here.
U three. U four, on operating budget changes for two nineteen. Within the public works, building maintenance, division operating budget details. U five. So, Mark, how do you adjust this? Division, we just built a brand-new building at the landfill. So we add another one to the inventory. And so there's gonna be some, I mean, it's not gonna start next week or, it may, you know. But, uh, how do you build that into their budget, is there?
In terms of the insurance costs?
No, no, the building maintenance costs in regards to personnel time and whatever else goes along with that, you know? At what point do you say, I got too many, I gotta do something else, I gotta add another guy?
Well, that's an interesting question, so the way that, that I would approach that. Is looking towards what, what is contracted services, like grounds maintenance and those sort of things. Is there a way to, if you do add, add an employee, save maybe some expense somewhere else, uh, by, by having, you know, uh, more employees able to do that work? Failing that, um, looking at what maintenance is getting done, what isn't, what's the deferred list, what's the reasoning behind it? Is it because of maybe some long-term medical leave from an employee? Or is it because you truly need the next, you know, to add another person? Um, now, the, the solid waste building that you mentioned, um, we were, we tried to be very careful in, in picking and, uh, you know, finishes and things. That make that very, very low maintenance. Um, so that was the, the intent of that building. Um, I don't know of a rule of thumb that you have X buildings, you need, you know, Y, you know, custodians or building maintenance people. I don't know of a formula like that.
Well, there probably isn't, but I just, you know, I just want to make sure we don't end up getting in a situation where we're falling behind. And then you really get in trouble trying to play catch-up. Cause we have numerous buildings and of numerous ages, so it means, just a question.
Yeah, I could see, um, you know, not, not obviously not next year. But I could see coming back to the podium with an additional employee request for various reasons in that particular division. And we just added one, um, I think it was last year. And that was a function of, uh, the complexities of being able to hire a temp. So we were always able to get along with a temp and, and then the, um, you know, I think it was Obamacare that set the limits of hours per year. And, and that sort of thing, and, and that really made that not workable.
So I see that, um, the funding sources for these are, uh, general fund, uh, tax support, public works sale tax fund and shoreline funds. Is there, um, similar to the vehicles, I guess, is there a way that the building division is billing back the solid waste for the work they do on the solid waste facility?
Um, sorry, Michelle, I'm looking at you. I'm, I'm not, I'm not sure that, I, I think that would be quite a lot of effort and a, quite a change from what's done now. Cause I know that the, you know, there's, in building maintenance, there's three, three people, that's it. And they get pulled in a lot of different directions on any given day. So they totally think they're gonna do, go to this building, the phone rings, they go to that building. Um, I think it could be troublesome to try to track that and then bill it back without a, a, a very large shift in how they do things.
Okay. Thank you. I think U nine is narratives. So U ten, um, at, uh, city hall, what that is, so the city hall has its own, um, cost center, so we can track the cost of each particular building. We don't do that with any other, other building, I don't think, at this particular point. But the city hall has its own here, so U eight is the cost center for that. Brings us to U ten, which is, uh, shoreline maintenance.
Yeah, Bob, let me back up a minute. On, on U nine, uh, six thousand dollars in there for us to replace the chairs next door. Are they that bad? Under item seven ninety, dice fifteen.
They, they, they are that bad, tho- those chairs, uh, are not functional the way they should be.
We use them all the time.
They're making these huge broken chairs, so they won't.
I wanna, I wanna back up one more time.
Sure.
On U nine, there's a telecommunications item for fifty-three hundred, just says wired and wireless telecommunications. And I wanna back up to a previous page, cause this is, this is city hall. Go back to, um, U six, which is operations division. There's a telecommunications item for fifty, oh, one for eight thousand dollars. How are we providing communications to each building? Is it the department that's dealing with it or are we dealing with, with it by billing? And there's just, it doesn't make any sense to me how some things are broke up. I, and maybe it's gonna take a little looking, but, uh, they all say expenses for wired and wireless communications, including landline and phone services. And on the one for operations, that's three people, but if they're providing, but if that's doing something in each building, it might make sense. Otherwise, that's quite a bit of money for three people that tend to move around a lot. And I, I don't know.
And you're, you're right, Councilmember, it is complex. Building maintenance division proper, they're located out at the shoreline building, they have a phone system out there. All three guys have cell phones they carry around. Each building, city hall's got a centralized phone system, uh, the departments. I'll try to get an analysis together for you so you can see.
It's just an interesting thing as I started seeing through there, is it, it seems like it stacks up and I, and it's probably all okay, but it just stacks up.
You're, you're, you're right.
Yeah.
It's, and we'll, we'll see what we can get together.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, so we're moving on to the shoreline building, U ten. U eleven. Carl, we still have a fire vehicle in that building? Is that tanker?
In shoreline?
Yeah.
I don't.
I don't think we still have one there, do we?
Yes, we do.
We do, we still have the tanker there.
Yep.
Does it operate?
Yes.
Yeah?
It's been there for a while. Is it one of them cranked up?
U twelve. Cost centers. U thirteen. Cost center, operation details, moving into narratives. U fourteen, narratives. U fifteen is capital budget.
With a little luck, somebody else can reboot fire station one.
Anything else on building maintenance? Solid waste. There's a summary there. So I see there's a reduction in that budget. For a deficit in regards to capital improvement project. V two. Mission statements, goals, accomplishments. V three. V four. Price of wires going up because of the tariffs. V five is a continuation of division operating budget details. So Carl, are the present rates, uh, at the landfill, um, are they, they covering the full cost at this point?
I have not been advised to the contrary, so.
Yeah, I know that, um, disposal contract is going up, has gone up, it had an escalator on it. And, uh, I was trying to figure this out earlier today and I actually talked to Manny a little about it. With the recycling, um, market changed and we're taking that paper at disposal, which will, will pay a disposal fee on it. And where the pass and puppy got zero for it and didn't have to pay for it with the shipping. So some of this metrics, the metrics, you know, change a little bit, you know, it'll take a while for it to settle in exactly what it is. But I was a little concerned that, um, the rates, I wanna make sure that they're staying up with the, the cost of disposal. But I was a little concerned that the rates, I want to make sure that they're staying up with the cost of disposal. V6 and V7 are narratives. V8, disposal vision, narratives. V10, we move into the recycle division. And I know that, I've heard from numerous people in the community that would still like to recycle, but the reality of right now, until we can figure out something to do because of the market changes and nobody's taking the mixed paper products and that type of stuff, we've got to come up with another game plan, maybe. V10. Pressure's there. V11, Division Operating Budget Details for the Recycling Division. V12, the narrative. V13, we move into the Collection Division, Solid Waste. Have its goal and accomplishments. V14. Division summaries. Funding sources, personnel, operating budget changes. V15, Collection Division Budget Details. V16, narratives for the Collection. V17. And then V18. Solid Waste Capital Budget. We're getting about 10 minutes to nine, and we still have, I think, a number of the departments that I think that we're going to probably want to have, the departments that appear for, especially when we get enforcement arbiters, if there's questions there regarding how we're moving forward with some of those projects. What's that?
I need to defer consideration of draft 2019 General Government Operating and Capital Budget until Monday, December 3, 2019.
So we'll stand and recess. Yeah, we'll go through comments before we do that.
Did you?
Sorry. Okay, go ahead. Let's put that on. Dave, we're going to take one comment, then go through comments, my apologies. So let's start with you, Mark.
Just one thing, Your Honor. I've asked that the old fire station be included as an agenda item for the next regular meeting. I'd like to have further discussion as to the future of that facility. Mr. Hilson was kind enough to give council members, me and myself, a tour of the building. It's appalling. It's in tough, it's in tough shape. I understand that the city's utilizing it for some storage right now. Very underutilized, not efficiently utilized in any fashion for the storage that's taking place there. And I want to have some further discussions. It came up tonight, we've got a lot of properties. We don't do much with them, we talk about them, then we forget about them. We had a recent conversation, and while that's still fresh, I'd like to keep that ball rolling. I'm also going to ask for council consideration of a very small, maybe a few hundred dollars of expense in additional public comment. We all got some feedback, some negatives, some positive about this. And beyond the regular agenda posting, I would ask for consideration of some small additional means of public notice so that we can get all interested parties, whether it be comment or use or gaining access to that building. Let those folks know what's going on so they can show up and speak their piece. That's all I got.
All right. Dave? Judy?
Nothing. So do we need four hands for to go on the agenda?
Yeah, we'll get there. We're going to wave around. One seat is anything else to be added to it yet. Julie? Sam?
I do have a comment. The day shelter, which is diagonally across the street from the police station, has people that have been camping out on the street during the day. They are a public nuisance. I personally observe more, and I've just driven by, so they're up the hill, women being accosted by cat calls and things that women would not have to endure just by walking down the street. So hopefully we can get some of the fellows out of the police station diagonally across the street to discourage that type of behavior or get the fellows to be inside the building. That is not acceptable behavior. That's all I have. Thank you.
Dick?
Nothing, Your Honor.
So to add to the fire station to the agenda on the sixth, will we have four hands to do that? How are we going to be on the sixth?
The sixth is pretty bad already.
It's already there, right?
It's already there. My understanding of Councilmember Flora's request is that he would like it advertised more broadly above and beyond what we do. We can do some block ads in the paper and get something to the radio stations if that's what you're thinking of, Councilmember.
Sounds good.
Yes, Your Honor.
And then we'll be camping out in front of this building, roughly that.
All right, so there we go.
We couldn't remove any executive sessions from the sixth.
Yeah.
There's nothing that can't wait till the first year.